Oh, I've been meaning to tell you that. I was gonna tell you last night again.
You guys can be able to go?
Yeah, yeah.
I like that happen.
You need your money again, yeah?
I didn't ask for money.
I know, but that's the other question I want to ask.
Okay. Yep. Okay.
I know, but I asked you before.
A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In a letter to the Commissioners dated October 30th, 2025, and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners. Dear Commissioners, a regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, November 4th, 2025 at 5:15 PM in the conference room at the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of our county. And Lord, we pray for the safety of our military men and women and our first responders. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Melner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Van Genhoven.
Here.
And Commissioner Jensen.
Here. Okay, Commissioner Johnson has been excused. We will move on to number five. We'll move on to number five. County Board minutes, 10:14:25. I need a motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number six, approve the agenda as written.
I would move that we approve tonight's agenda with the one addition to be added.
Support.
And that one addition is?
New business, number 12.
Correct.
Yes.
So it's this Dennis Quaid Show viewpoint?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Presentation, written communication received and forwarded. There was several. I need a motion, put those on file.
So moved.
Support. Oh, sorry.
Any discussion on any of those? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number eight, courts of standing, statutory special committees and others. Number nine, public comment on agenda items. We have Steve returning.
Hi Commissioners, I'll just be brief. I just handed you all the flyer. Tuesday is Veterans Day. Across the country, our nation's veterans will be recognized at 11:00 AM, November 11th, the day that recognizes all veterans of past services. And I personally invite each and every one of you to, and the members of our county, to reach out to their, and find out the local programs that are going on in each individual community. I know many communities across Delta County have their own, little ones usually at their schools. The one here in Escanaba services all those that cannot attend one in their private communities. It's open to the public, and it will be going on at 11:00 AM at the Delta County Chamber of Commerce Building. And as a member of the new Department of Veterans Affairs within the county, I felt obligated to come out and at least invite you all to help us remember those that have served and sacrificed so much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other public comment on agenda items?
And there's no one online either.
Nobody online?
No.
Seeing none. We will move to number 10, committee reports, Administrator's report.
Thank you. The airport manager, Ashley Young, received notice from the Department of Transportation that all EAS agreements will be funded and honored by the federal government during the shutdown. This means that all Delta flights in and out of Delta County Airport will be running as scheduled and will not be affected during this time. Also, the new EAS agreement is still moving through the Department of Transportation even during the shutdown for 2026, and no new information has been received on that at this time. The county has several open positions listed on our website that are currently, that we are currently accepting applications for until the positions are filled. They include the veteran service officer, a plumbing inspector, and a mechanical inspector. So please visit the county's website underneath the Government tab to know how to apply. Sprinkler and fire alarm equipment tests. As you know, the board has approved the new contract. It's a new vendor that we use this year, AHERN. They completed all of those. We have received those reports back very quickly. And there were no deficiencies that were found throughout any of the county buildings on any of the equipment. It was done really efficiently and effectively, so we're very happy with the new vendor. Pavement has begun in front of the courthouse and the surrounding east side entrance. This work will be ongoing throughout this week, so if anyone is planning on visiting the courthouse for services, please plan accordingly and allow yourself extra time to secure parking. There's no parking along that east side and in front of the courthouse on Lettington while the work is being performed. And finally, all fiscal year '26 grants have been administered and awarded to the recipients for the opioid task force grants. The total project award for this year is $114,984.37, and that does include a carryover for one project from fiscal year '25. Thank you.
I have one question. In the, with AHERN, did we include the parks facilities as Delta County facilities that need to be tested?
No, the only contract we had at this time was with the courthouse, the service center, and the jail.
Okay. The only thing I would wonder is if we do need to worry about that for the office, and then there's a couple of other structures, but at least the office. It just dawned on me that we probably aren't testing that.
Right, and I can let Cory know because we may be able to add on into that contract, the airport, at the same time.
Okay.
So then we can include any other county buildings.
Thank you.
Into the contract.
Move to place on file.
Support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Uh, let's see here. Finance Committee report, minutes of 10:23:25.
So on 10:23:25, Commissioner Williams and Administrator DeSalvo, myself, had a finance meeting. We are gonna address both of the items that we actually addressed in the finance meeting. They will be items three and items four on your agenda this evening.
Can I get a motion, put that on file?
So moved.
Support.
Favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Buildings and grounds, minutes of 10:31:25. Me and Commissioner Johnson had a building and ground meeting on that date, and we looked at some old business, central dispatch relocation. We discussed, no action was taken on those items. Also on old business, we had circuit court probation office remodeling. They did have a bid from Roy Ness, and that is not gonna, they figured the maintenance department can handle that, so no action is needed on that, because maintenance is gonna handle that. On new business, it was boardroom usage policy, and we will be discussing that later on on the agenda. So I need a motion to accept.
I move that we accept the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee on 10:31:25.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number four, department updates. Any department updates? Any department head updates? Nope. Okay. Move on to unfinished business. Service Center Boardroom Technology. Chris?
Yeah, so we have been talking about improving the technology in this room to service the, the boardroom table that we're at right now, and also the center of the room where larger meetings would take place. And we had originally, when this was brought up way back when, I can't remember exactly when, we had wanted to sort of wait until we had more ownership of the room before we invested any finances into it. So at this point, I think we need to decide what exactly we want to do. We have had conversations about recording the all meetings that are in this room, not just the Board of Commissioners' meetings or meetings that happen at this table, but also in the room. We've had conversations about whether that's audio and video or just audio. So I don't know what the Commission wants to do, but I do have some idea, just rough numbers. If we were to at least do an upgrade of the microphones that are at this table and the public, and the podium, that would be roughly $6,000. It would be new microphones and the new mixer and so forth, which would improve our quality, audio quality for the meetings as we do them today. So there's that. We could also replace the audio microphones on this table with wireless, and then that could be used at other meetings that were like in the center of the room and so forth, so it would be all wireless. There's pros and cons to that. Wired can sometimes be better than wireless, but there's, there's just pros and cons there, but something we can do. And that's a little bit less expensive than having to integrate all, microphones all over in the room that are wired. That would be roughly $20,000. And then adding microphones to, adding a microphone array, which would be wired, to the center room, to the center table, that would be roughly $15,000 to coordinate with any wired microphones that would be put in at this table. So just to give you some idea of what the costs are, and then of course, we had some quotes that are in the board packet, which were for sort of live streaming and, you know, a much more comprehensive technology change. So I don't know exactly what the group wants to do. Myself, I record meetings. We have meetings in this room, in the center, and I record them on my own device and then use a transcription software, and I transcribe it and provide the, the transcription. But then I also provide the audio recording. That's, you know, we can do that too, so that you would just be recording the audio, but not the video. It's a lot less expensive that way. But just those I'm throwing out there, and we can have a conversation about what, what you want to see done.
For myself and for many of the constituents that I've talked to, they've been waiting for the OWL system, you know, for, for many months, so that if we're gonna move meetings, more meetings over here, are we planning in the future to move over personnel and finance, building and grounds, those types of meetings to this room?
I don't know that. That might be something to ask the Administrator.
We've always just used the admin conference room because it's just easier. Usually the people that attend the meetings are in the courthouse, so we've done that. But we have had those meetings here, depending on if it's more convenient for the Commissioners or if there's another meeting behind it. We've used both.
We, we have moved the Parks and Rec Commission meeting to this room. So that, that meeting is happening here.
Well, we have opioid here. We have Planning Commission here.
Yep.
So.
Sony Board of Appeals is here.
Yep. I myself would like to see a full, comprehensive overhaul and upgrade. That's just needed.
I, I mean, if we're gonna do it, I think it's probably better to do it in, in its entirety versus trying to piecemeal it over time. That tends not to work as you try to bring, just from time alone, bringing a year from now's new technology into what you already have. Let's face it, if you get down the road three, four years, that's a big difference as trying to upgrade it versus doing it for one shot.
Sure.
The other one is, this room's actually still the county EOC.
Gotcha.
So there.
We have our EOC meetings here too, so I mean, that's L.A. P.C., so that would be a good thing.
Well, there's even another benefit to that is being, it is the EOC.
It is the EOC.
Correct. It is the actual EOC, and there, and I know what.
I wonder if we could actually get some grant funding because it's an EOC. That might, that might be one, yeah.
I think we talked about that last time.
It, yeah, exactly. It actually goes through the state police, because they're the one that oversees that. But I don't know in this budget where that's at and how much is available.
Okay.
But quite often, there is available to help with the technology upgrades.
Right.
For the EOC, because let's face it, that's how you're interfacing with the state EOC and/or other FEMA agencies in the event of a disaster.
Okay. And so some of, some questions that I would have, just, just to understand better, is with the OWL setup, as a recording secretary, so I'm a recording secretary for Parks and Rec Commission, if we were to implement like an OWL, I would still have to take that recording and, and do something with it. Like I, it's not, it's not going. Yeah, I guess I, I would like to understand what you think the recording secretary's responsibilities are with technology in a room. Are you expecting, I guess, like how it happens up here, where it's just sort of automated and online and streamed, and there's nothing that you have to do? Or are you expecting the recording secretaries still to do some?
Well, I'm the recording secretary for opioid, and I handle the Zoom link access for our opioid task force members because they are allowed to, you know, vote and be part of quorum for being on Zoom. So I would assume that it would be our responsibility to learn the system, just as it would be for the Planning Commission, recording secretary would have to learn how to do the system. My ultimate goal would be that all of these meetings are uploaded on our YouTube.
Oh, so they, so you would want audio and video?
Yes.
The, the other part I was, I was looking at with that, if we're gonna do it, the audio and video, and with the recording secretary still doing their part, their minutes, it's not a transcript, and that's what we approve as minutes. So it doesn't have to be where it literally is a transcript of the whole meeting. It's, they're literally minutes. So I, the recording secretaries are still gonna do their portions that they do on those boards as well, because that's where the minutes are come from.
Yeah, because like my minutes are, are like our, our county minutes. And Parks and Rec and Planning Commission have very detailed, like transcribed minutes. So I think it's just, I think both are okay. I'm just thinking that if we have the audio and the video and it's uploaded online, maybe you wouldn't have to do such comprehensive minutes, but you still can. It's not to say that you don't have to. But it's just full transparency, because we, when we have our personnel in our finance committee meetings, a lot of the times they're in the middle of the day, and people, you know, they can't attend in person, but maybe they can hop online and watch. Or, you know, they, they can watch it later. I mean, I just think it, it would be a nice extension from what we do here at, at the County Board of Commissioners to extend that to our personnel, finance, building and grounds.
So those meetings, like we heard, don't always happen here.
Well, then maybe they need to. I mean, if we're gonna spend all that money on technology, why not move them here then?
Well, I guess that's what I'm asking is, like, we can, we can do the work to, to put quotes together to accommodate what we're looking for. But I want to make sure that if we're gonna, if we're actually spending money, a lot of money, if that's the case, and I don't know how much this would cost, that it is going to be utilized extensively, right? I mean, you just don't.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, you don't want to be putting the technology in place and then having meetings elsewhere.
This price tag that's out here is a hundred, $100,000 plus.
Well, that's not the OWL. The OWL was, we had, we had quoted out the OWL before, and I don't remember what it was off the top of my head. It was, yeah, it was fairly inexpensive. But that was not, that is not set up the way that you're talking about setting up, which is live streaming to YouTube. That is not gonna happen with that scenario. With that scenario, it's, you're gonna hook up to the OWL, the OWL is going to be, you're recording it on some device that you're bringing in, and then you're going to have to make that available. So we can go an inexpensive route, but that means that the recording secretaries have work they're gonna have to do, which I'm perfectly fine with, at least as a starting point. But if we want to have what we have up here for the rest of the room, it's going to be a significant expenditure.
Well, we've had it before when we had our joint meetings of the Airport Board and the Board of Commissioners when we were going through the, the changes, where we were all at the roundtable and we couldn't be picked up.
Right.
You know what I mean? So, and, and those were really important meetings, and a lot of people were really interested in them. And I know I've talked to Administrator DeSalvo about having joint meetings between the county and the cities, you know? City of Escanaba, City of Gladstone. Those are gonna be other important meetings that I really feel should be archived, you know, archived, livestreamed, audio, video. So I think that it's only a benefit. I understand it's, you know, a huge cost, but are we going, if we only do it halfway, are we gonna regret that we didn't go all the way?
I don't know. I mean, I, yeah, I, I.
Because right now, everything's calm and fine and, and fine and D and D. But if something comes up where the public gets really invested and involved again, you know, it, it could be something where, you know, we, we might want to have that.
Well, I mean, we could have without, so adding video, requiring video throughout this room just complicates the price tag. That's, that's just plain and simple, you know? So if we wanted to add the audio part of it, which I had talked about earlier, I mean, that's a, that's a relatively digestible cost to me, which would, would bring in the rest of this room. So having meetings out in this square area, not at this table. But the minute that you need to add all of the, the video to it, you just complicate the costs. It, it just becomes more cost prohibitive. With like a, a simple solution, an OWL, it's, it's simple and it's easy, but it's not, you know, you're still gonna have to do the work, right? So I guess I just, I don't know what direction you guys want to go.
Here's an option we can look at. The audios are cheapest route to do upfront. So we could move with doing the audio, and we can look at applying for one of those other grants. If we receive that grant to upgrade to where we want to, then we can move forward with it.
I like that.
Because that's a, that's a sizable, sizable hit otherwise.
And we can, we can always have the audio purchase and the implementation of this new audio technology such that the future is, that it would be able to be integrated into any future system that we're looking at to collect video as well. So, I mean, that could be a solution that is, to me, the cost would be digestible, and then looking for a grant to do the rest.
Now, how's, what's Brandon think about all this stuff?
He's, I'm basically relaying what he and I have had conversations about.
Now, I know Q pad uses an OWL, it's right back there.
Well, I think that's Michigan Works. I, I don't know, maybe, I don't know who owns that OWL. Yeah.
We always use it when we're here.
Yep. And that's perfectly, that's what I'm talking about. We can do that. When you use that, you're actually bringing your own device, and you're plugging into it, and then you're doing the recording, and then once the meeting is over, you're taking that recording, making minutes from it, and then providing that recording, uploading it somewhere or giving it to someone, you know? So that's what I'm saying, is that you, we can do that, and it's a relatively inexpensive cost to do that, but the recording secretary still will have a responsibility to get this information out to the public versus the way it is here, where it's just automatically livestreamed.
So if we do, do what Commissioner Jensen suggests, doing that and maybe look for a grant? Or are we gonna, do we have the money and finance somewhere?
Well, it's not budgeted for, for fiscal year '26. So I'd have to take a look at the budget and see where I could pull the funds from, because it's not.
Have to find out where it's gonna come from?
Correct.
Now, since it's under $10,000, we don't, do we need to have a finance meeting on that?
We still probably should, because we don't know where it's coming from. It would be an expense that I definitely would want to bring the finance committee in for and then bring back to the full board, so they know exactly where in the budget the money is coming from. If it's under $10,000, we wouldn't have to do like an RFP for the equipment. We would be able to just look around and at least get three quotes on whatever equipment that we're looking for, including installation, and if Brandon can do all of it, if he can't, what we're gonna have to do in that realm as well.
Make a motion to send to Finance?
I'll support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay. Unfinished business, number two, Scott Graham, file update. We will have a closed session. We need a motion for the purpose of discussing in writing legal memorandum under the OMA Section 15 dot 268, 8H.
Are you making that motion?
No, he's asking for it.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make the motion, then that we go into closed session for the purpose of discussing a written legal memorandum under OMA Section 15 point 268, Paragraph 8, Subparagraph H.
Do we have a second?
I guess I just have a question. Why do we need to go into closed session for this? We've been really pretty upfront about what we're doing with Scott Graham, but I, I guess I just am not sure why we can't just have the conversation in the open. Anybody have a?
Well, I'll, I'll support it for discussion, because we should support for discussion, so.
Okay.
All right. So do you want to have our prosecuting attorney come up and ask her that?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, or we can go into closed session, and then I can, based on what we find out, request that it, it not be, you know, that it be released.
Then we're gonna have a decision after.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm not, I don't understand why this is, why we're getting an opinion on this, but that's fine. Did we ask for an opinion?
You asked me to bring in to the prosecuting attorney to figure out steps to move forward as far as with the attorney, the grievance. Right. And so in discussion with her, we have kind of laid out what we feel is appropriate moving forward.
And that's the written legal opinion?
That's what's here, the legal opinion here, yeah.
Okay.
So need, need a roll call?
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Mel, and Melner?
Yes.
Second, your stuff together?
Matt, if you have it in front of you, can you take us out of closed session if you've got it in front of you?
Yeah.
I'll do that every time.
Okay.
Yes, you're all good.
So we need a motion to come out of closed session?
I would move that we come out of closed session and no decisions were reached.
To support?
I don't think we need a, I don't think we have to roll call on this.
No, we don't have to.
Just to support. Yeah, support, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Now, we go on to, to be the decision?
So, based on what we, what we were provided by legal counsel, you know, Mr. Graham is obviously not responding, appears to not be practicing any longer, or at least doesn't appear to be active. And so, the, you know, recommendation is that we focus on what is, I guess, more substantive, or I'm not sure what the right word is, but the FAA report that, that we, as a county, you know, that we focus on that instead of on Mr. Graham and his inability to respond to us for whatever reasons. And I think that, I think at that, at this point, that makes a lot of sense. And so, that's what I would suggest that we do, is that we focus administration and our legal counsel on the FAA report and draft some sort of statement that is specific to this event and provide us with that information.
And then we also have to take into account that this request was based off of a FOIA appeal. And so, we have to now end the FOIA process for that, and...
I think we probably should do that at a separate meeting.
Okay.
And because my personal opinion on it, I want to look at, you know, what did we, I don't remember exactly what we did. I think we, we denied in part, in part. I just don't remember exactly, so I would prefer to have that information in front of me before making a motion to either, you know, go one direction or another with that FOIA. I, I just don't recall the exact details on it.
Okay. Should we make a, a motion to, to have our administrator draft a letter to Ms. Numelin explaining?
I don't know. I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say at this point that there's anything directed at Ms. Numelin because we need to, I would like to see what we did with the FOIA, because I don't recall. So I would, I would prefer that we wait until the next meeting so that we are given the history on the FOIA, because it's been quite a while now, and I just don't recall. And, and then what we would make a motion on is to direct our administration and our legal counsel to move forward with the FAA's response and their findings and draft some sort of statement relative to that. And then, at the next meeting, we can address the FOIA, part of it.
Commissioner Williams, did you make a motion on what you're talking about right now?
No, she was just recommending.
I did not, yeah. I did not.
We should, we should have a motion, because we got discussion right now.
I'll make a motion.
We should have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, that we direct administration and legal counsel to draft a statement relative to the FAA report and that we cease seeking files from Attorney Graham.
Oh, support. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can we have a roll call?
Do we? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Melner?
Yes.
Just point of clarification, Nancy, just to understand, why did we need a roll call there?
We didn't. I, I just requested it.
Oh, you requested it. Okay.
Hey. We will...
And then, are we gonna...
And, and then, I, is it okay if we wait until the next meeting to address the FOIA portion of it?
Yes, that wasn't, that wasn't on the agenda tonight, so yes.
Okay.
Add it to the next agenda.
Perfect, thank you.
Do you need a request for us to have that added?
No.
Okay.
With that, we will move on to new business and payment of bills.
I've examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasure to the claimants for the amounts allowed. We have total report of claims, three hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Commissioner expenses of one thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and ten cents.
I would move that we pay her bills.
Support.
Oh, let's see here, roll call.
Commissioner Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Melner?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Bills are paid for. Number two, parks financial outlook.
So, I had asked to have this on the agenda just so that we had some information before we actually start discussing item number three, which is the Parks and Rec Grants for playgrounds. I felt like it was probably pretty important that we have an understanding of where the parks lie right now financially. And so, I put together a couple of charts that are available in the packet, and then there's one that's a printout here. And really, I think what's important to, to, to look at is, it's the perspective, right? So, previously, when the Conservation District was managing our parks, they had a perspective on how the parks were managed. And they, and they managed it like a business inside of their unit of, their quasi-unit of government. And so, the way that they looked at revenue and expenses is different than how we look at revenue and expenses. So, for example, when we give the Conservation District an allocation of fifty thousand dollars to manage the parks, they record that on their books as revenue, because it's fifty thousand dollars coming in to them. So that's revenue from their perspective. From a county parks perspective, that's an expense, right? So, the same with, when the county gives the Conservation District money for projects, they're giving them, say, you know, fifty thousand dollars to, to accomplish some maintenance that needs to be done. From the district's perspective, when they received that fifty thousand dollars from the county, that would be considered revenue. But from the county's perspective, that's an expense to the parks. So, another example would be the hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan that the county gave to the Conservation District, and then the Conservation District paid that back over a number of years. The Conservation District recorded that loan as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue. It's not revenue. It's from the county's perspective. It's, there's nothing wrong with the way they did things. It's just a different perspective. But from a perspective of the county, that hundred fifty thousand dollars is an expense. It's a, it's a, it's a liability in, in the Conservation District's books. It should be a liability, because it's, you know, it's a loan. It's like getting a mortgage. If you go and you take out a mortgage to buy a house, if you take out a hundred and fifty thousand dollar mortgage, you don't then go home and put in your home finances that you just got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of income. It's a liability. You know, you have to pay it back, so. So what I did is, for history, I deducted, from the Conservation District's perspective, I deducted out of their revenue all of what the county would consider to be expenses, so that we can get a true understanding of what the parks' revenue and expenses actually are. So if you look at the chart, the top chart shows what the Conservation District's finances showed. So, starting in fiscal year eleven, they have revenue exceeding expenses by a little bit. You know, and you can, you can, you know, look throughout time here. The blue bar is revenue, and the green bar is expenses. And so, for the most part, their revenue just barely exceeded their expenses. But from a county perspective, which is on the bottom, from the county's perspective, revenue did not exceed expenses. Expenses exceeded revenue, okay? So, so what we want to do is, we want to make sure that we are, from a county parks perspective, we want to make sure that we're fluid, that we're not in the hole, okay? So, when you do this and you, and you look at it over time, the bottom chart shows that, over time, we are slowly working toward producing more revenue than we have expenses. And we actually are in a really good place this year. So, yep, so this year, we have revenue that exceeds expenses, and we're putting money into our fund balance, which is really good. So, the whole gist of this is to help the commission understand that we are in a good place with the parks. The finances look solid, okay? So, we have a fund balance right now that can support what is next on the agenda, which is why I want to make sure that everybody sees this. And, and so that fund balance, you know, every time that we have a little bit of extra revenue every year, then we have expenses, that goes into our fund balance. And that fund balance can fund projects that aren't covered by grants or, you know, whatever might, there's maintenance projects that we're not going to get grants on. And so you want to make sure you have some money in your fund balance to cover those kinds of things. And so we are doing really well. So the whole, the picture here is that we are, we are in a good place with our parks, with our revenue. And then I wanted to also just point out that if you look at, like, the utility costs, utility costs are climbing over time, and they have been from day one. Utility costs have gone up. Eighty-four percent of our utility is electricity. Eighty-four percent. Our Parks manager has some great ideas about how to recoup some of that cost, and she's going to take that to the Parks Commission. I should have started with that. I should have noted that. This is weird to have this conversation here before the Parks Commission, but it's because of the timing of our meetings. We can't, we have to be able to, we had to have the conversation here first, and then Parks Commission next week, and it's just the timing of meetings. So it's weird to be doing it the other way around, but whatever. Eighty-four percent is electricity, and we're working on how to rein some of those costs in. And then, the next is employee costs over time. This is a very, I think, a very interesting chart that shows office work, which is sort of clerical, managerial, answering the phones, that sort of thing. That's fluctuated over time. But maintenance, which is green in the graph, has stayed pretty steady. So the amount of maintenance required has stayed pretty steady, but it's, it's reduced now that the county has taken over. So we're spending a little bit less as far as maintenance is concerned. But that's, that's a good, that's a good thing. And then the reason that you see that bump up in twenty-five is, and it's red and yellow in your chart, is benefits. So the employees who work in the parks now receive benefits. So that's life insurance, health insurance, retirement, so forth. Whereas previously, employees were not receiving benefits. So even though our employees, we're spending a little bit more money on employees, we still have our revenue exceeding our expenses, so we're still good there. And then, and then there's a chart that shows the camping revenue. And the camping revenue has been increasing for Pioneer, which we would expect, because we've spent considerable money on projects to fund expansion of Pioneer. So we would expect that there should be additional revenue coming in there, which you do see. And Fuller Park has increased over time as well, but it's staying pretty steady, pretty stable. And then I think lastly, what have I got here? The pavilion rentals. That's the last one. And pavilion rentals, this is, we have two pavilions that we rent out for, you know, events and that sort of thing. The new pavilion, which is now called the River Pavilion, clearly makes more revenue than the older pavilion, which is called the Pioneer Pavilion now. But, you know, it fluctuates a lot, so I think maybe some strategy there to kind of label, to kind of stabilize that a little bit might be kind of nice.
Well, and it makes sense. I mean, to rent the newer pavilion is three times the cost, too. So you're going to see that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm looking at the Delta County perspective for revenue, expenses, and profit, right?
Mm-hmm.
Ken, do you, do you know why, like, in fiscal year twenty-three, it showed fund, the gray, fund balance, a hundred thousand? And within two years, that went up to three hundred thousand? What, why is that such a, a, like, a difference in amount?
I couldn't answer that question. Do you have any idea, Ashley? I just have the numbers. Emily, I meant. Sorry, because I worked with Ashley on this to start with, so.
Not being here during fiscal three twenty, fiscal year twenty-three to know, you know, sometimes it's hard to say if there was a big project that was done, and so there wasn't as, as much money to put into fund balance that year. Whereas then, the following fiscal years, there wasn't, you know. So that, that money wasn't eaten up in a different project. So, I mean, that's what I would first look at if I was looking into the financials, to see if there was an approved project that maybe cost a lot. to see if there was an approved project that maybe cost a lot of money. You know, like the year that the well went out at Pioneer Trail Park, that was an unscheduled, unbudgeted expense that was quite expensive. So it could have been something like that. I mean, I can speculate, but without actually digging into the financials, it's hard to say.
And that's something we can dig into and get an answer for you on.
And that's about the time it went over, it was in '23, wasn't it?
It was prior to '23 because I remember being here when that, that happened. I think it was like around the Fourth of July. It might have been '21 or '22.
Well, I was going to say, there's, there's the other portion in there too. Some of the other projects and expenses that normally would have come out of the budget would have came out of ARPA funds possibly.
Well, the ARPA funds are, yep, in 2024 or 2025. I think, I forget which one, I'd have to look at the detail. There's 122,000 of ARPA funds that covered. And of course, in this, those are, so when you receive money as a grant and then that same amount is dedicated to a project, it's a net wash. It's zero, you know? So you're not, you're not showing that as revenue and then showing it as an expense. It's just a net zero, you know? Which is the, ARPA funds were 122,000. There was revenue that came in, but there was an expense to cover it, so, you know? And there's a lot of that.
Right, but like, for, for just a regular citizen who looks at this and says, wow, you know, from fiscal year 11 to fiscal year, basically, 2022, nothing changed. And then all of a sudden, it hopped up to 100 grand for fiscal year '23. And then, oh my gosh, for fiscal year '24 and '25, it was nearly $300,000 in revenue, or in fund balance, but we hadn't, like...
I'll look into it for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I'll look into it for you. I just, these are the numbers. It's not the, you know, it's not diving into the detail of it. It's just putting all the numbers in a spreadsheet and putting them on a chart, you know?
Got it.
But I'll look into why, from fiscal year '23 to '24, there's that increase in the fund balance.
Awesome, thank you.
I have to do that for the Parks and Rec Commission anyway, so.
Yay, thank you.
Yeah.
So that was mainly just discussion then?
Yeah, it's just to help frame the next, yeah, the next item on the agenda.
In the, we will go to number three, Parks and Rec Grant for Playground.
I had brought this to the Finance Committee with our Parks Manager, Heather Ladue, because we had received a grant, two grants, actually. The first grant that I had applied for that we, it, we haven't officially accepted yet. However, there are funds that we know and we're told were set aside for Delta County through Eagle that could be applied for due to solar projects within the county and that those funds could be used for projects in our parks as, amongst other things that we could have applied for. So when I did apply for it, I did apply for playground equipment as well as water equipment for Pioneer Trail Park. And the timing of the grant and the timing of the second grant that I applied for and we received are kind of overlapping on us. So right now, we also received and have been awarded 100% match grant through a company who supplies the playground equipment. And so, right now, we have received word from Eagle that our grant has processed through. It's on the last stage of processing. It was held up because they normally try to process several at a time instead of just one at a time. The grant administrator that I've been talking to, I asked the question about if we were to proceed with a project that we outlined in the grant, are we still going to be eligible for that grant? Because a lot of grants, you cannot start the project before you receive the grant. He said absolutely. We've had other counties and municipalities that have done that before. Those funds are yours, so we will supply them to you. So with that information, I felt confident in moving forward with presenting this to Finance to say, right now, we don't have that grant, those grant funds. However, if we don't move forward now purchasing the equipment, we will lose the match funding at 100%. It doubles our income from about $180,000 to over 300. So it's a significant amount of money that we can get more equipment, better equipment for the parks. And so I requested from Finance, right now financially, we have enough in the Parks Fund Balance to support that, that we can purchase that equipment before the deadline to receive the match funds. So I said, can we, can we do that? Can we move forward, use fund balance from Parks? When we receive our Eagle grant, we will just reimburse our Parks Fund Balance. So that's the request on the table tonight, brought to you from Finance.
Can I ask a few questions? The playground equipment that you're looking to purchase, is this at all accessible for wheelchairs, handicap?
So when we looked at equipment, they don't have any that is considered fully ADA compliant, but it does meet ADA compliant regulations. So there, there may be some equipment that would be accessible, but not all equipment is going to be ADA accessible.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's another, that was a question I asked as well. And there's, like, for instance, the substrate that it sits on, you can wheel across it and then come, you know, at a certain level, your device would meet the level of the playground equipment so that transporting a person from the, from not being on the equipment onto the equipment is accessible and you can do that and so forth. But as far as like wheeling a chair onto it, no.
Yeah, like, you have to get like a swing or something, you know what I mean? But I see, I see the handicap sign right here. So I was just wondering if there was anything like more inclusive that we could add on or do or...
I think the Parks Manager did add on a couple of pieces of equipment. They're not like attached to the big piece, they're kind of off to the side. And therefore, I think like autistic children and other types of children who, who have, who just have different needs for this kind of equipment. So she did do that work and added some of those pieces on, yeah.
I have a point of order. Can we, we need to make a motion if we're going to continue to have a discussion.
Oh, sure.
So, yeah.
I was just asking.
Yeah, no, no, that's, I understand. I would actually move that the board approved transferring $162,597.12 from the park, from the park fund balance to purchase the equipment to be reimbursed from our Eagle grant.
And I'll support that.
Am I allowed to talk now?
Yeah, no, no.
Oh, thank you.
Now the discussion. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So when are we looking for a potential installation?
So we have to purchase the equipment before November. I believe it's 11th or 15th.
It's the 15th.
And then, so we would purchase it either this week or beginning of next. And then we would do, we've determined that it would be the best for the county if our maintenance department prepared the area. We can do that on our own and not have to pay for that. But as far as the actual installation of the equipment, we are going to have the company come and they will install it for us.
Okay.
So we're kind of splitting that cost a little bit. And the actual installation would be next spring, so spring of 2026. Thank you.
What do you have down for the floor? Do you have the rubber?
No, that's incredibly expensive. It's a, it's a, it's a type of...
I know Brampton Township is having the rubber put down.
Yeah, well, Ford River was going to and couldn't afford it. And so they did the next best, which is like, it's a, it's a wood composite, but it's ADA compliant, so, yeah.
I'm sure it's the same company that Brampton Township's been going through.
Also, there's a cost savings to doing this being it's the middle one where if you went with sand, which is still legal, it actually has to have people till it regularly.
Yeah.
And then it should get into some of the others, like you said, the wood or the rubber. Yes, so.
I wanted to make sure that, I talked to Heather, the Parks Manager, the other day. She was, she was bringing this to the Parks and Rec Commission on our meeting, which is on the 14th. And so I think she was going to order the next morning as long as Parks and Rec Commission.
No, I would recommend that we do that either this week or first thing next week. Just because we've never ordered from that company before. I don't know how long it would take, what paperwork we have to fill out with them. I would, I don't want to push it as close to the deadline as possible. With the board's approval, if they do approve the motion tonight, then we would be able to purchase it. And then she could just update the Parks Commission at the next meeting.
Gotcha, I understand. And I would just like to add real quick that in our survey of our, for our five-year rec plan, one of the items that came to the top was playground equipment, was upgrading playground equipment at our parks. And so this is very much in line with what the public has asked for as well. So I feel confident that we're doing what the public would like to see happen in our parks.
And we've also had to remove some equipment this, at the end of the season and even before the end of the season due to safety issues. So even the equipment that we did have there, a lot of it was, is now removed and we don't have.
And I'd just like to add that our, our former park manager, Steve Wery, was very passionate about getting playground equipment because he loved the kids at the parks. So for us to be able to do this kind of brings, I think, his vision of Fuller Park to fruition. So it's pretty cool.
Yeah, which actually brings up something else that I want to talk about after we get done with this motion, so.
Okay. We have a motion, we got a second. Any more discussion? I want to roll call on this just because there's so much money.
Yep, good idea.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melner?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Van Genhoven?
Yes. And now I would like to just take a moment, if you don't mind. And I would like to touch on what Commissioner Van Genhoven just said. I had this written down somewhere and I don't know where it is. Anyways, Steve Wery worked diligently to try to get playground equipment at Fuller Park. Well, upgraded playground equipment, new playground equipment. Many, many years he worked on this. And, and one of the first things that he talked to me about when I became a commissioner was the playground equipment at Fuller Park. So I would like to ask that we have a dedication, when we put this playground equipment in place, that we have a dedication and we dedicate this to Steve Wery, invite him and, and make it a dedication for him. Because I, I really feel like...
That's fantastic.
Okay, so everybody would be in support of that. Okay, thank you, all right.
Okay. We'll move on to number four, Veteran Service Officer Salary.
I had met with the Finance Committee because when we had opened up for the hiring of the second VSO officer with our current one moving to Director, there was some confusion with the salary that was approved through the Finance Committee and to the Board months ago. I believe it was back in either April, May, that it was approved. And so I brought it back to the Finance Committee for clarification on it. The Finance Committee met. There still was a little bit of confusion, even from the Finance Committee, as to what was approved and what was actually budgeted for, for fiscal year '26 that the former administrator had put together and was involved in, in those discussions as well. So the current Director and myself were asking the Finance Committee just to take a look at that, to look at the gap between where the current Director is and where we would be hiring the VSO Director. And we asked, we came up with, we shifted a little bit forward the range. We kept a range, but we just shifted it forward. And we were just asking if we could adjust it into that new range.
I would make a motion that we adjust the Veteran Service Officer VSO Salary to the range that the Finance Committee approved. I would take their recommendation.
I'll support. Okay. Again, we're spending money, so.
Well, I was going to say, the one thing it does do versus the range that was there versus the range now, this actually puts it back where the range is appropriate between the, the VSO and what the Director, and it doesn't mean that somebody's obviously starting out at the top end of that. But that is, that actually helps with their overall pay scale.
Any other discussion?
Yep, so you're going, just for transparency sake, for the public, we're going from a range of 43 to 48 to now being a range of 43 to 53.
Correct.
That's the range, yep.
This is a full-time position, correct?
Correct, yep.
And it's within, well within the budget of the VSO Department.
What does that equate out to per hour?
It's salary, I don't know.
This is a sal, this is a salaried position?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-one thousand to twenty... Twenty-six thousand, or twenty-six fifty an hour?
It would be $25.48 an hour.
At the 43 or at the 53?
At the 53, at the top of the range.
What's it at, the 43?
$20.67.
This is what was recommended by the Director.
Any more discussion?
So is there a reason why?
Yes, apparently.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, my question is why, what was the reasoning from going a $5,000 span the way it was before to now a $10,000 span the way it is now, or the way that it's proposed? Why wouldn't you go like a $5,000 and do it like 48 to 53? Why are you doing 43 to 53?
I wish that Dave was here to answer these questions. This was his recommendation and I don't recall exactly, I don't recall the details.
I think he was just going off of the fact that, right now, we haven't received a lot of applications. Some of the applications that we have received, I should say, one or two of them, don't have a lot of experience in this position. So I think he was just looking at if we do hire somebody that doesn't really meet the qualifications that we have on the job posting right now, he wouldn't be able to justify a higher end of a position, especially from what he was making himself when he left the position with the experience.
That's right, yeah, I remember.
And, and where he was at with it. I think he was putting that into consideration of it.
So this allows a person who's really new to come in and grow within the position that's not starting at where he left off, which he obviously had to. I remember now, I'm remembering the details. He has, you know, 10 years' experience. Why would we bring in a person who doesn't have all the experience at the same salary that he was with 10 years' experience? So he wanted to be able to have that flexibility to bring in someone who could potentially grow within the position instead of starting at the top.
You know, makes sense.
Yeah, so I, I couldn't remember the details, but now I, I do, so, okay.
Well, you know how I am about employee wages.
Yeah, all right.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Melner?
Yes.
Johnson? Oops. Williams?
Yes.
Engenhoven?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes. Motion passed. Number five, resignation of M. Parker and W. Fields, Seasonal Parks.
These are just our seasonal workers. Every time they have to put in a resignation, doesn't mean they're not going to be rehired in the future or that they want to apply. But due to HR purposes, they do need to put in a resignation and then they can be rehired in the spring.
I would make a motion to accept the resignation of Mary Baker and Wayne Fields, Seasonal Park Employees.
Send them a letter.
Send them a thank you letter.
I'll support. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, motion passed. Number six, request to donate sick leave.
Every once in a while, and I don't know if this board has had requests yet or not, but we do have requests from employees or supervisors of employees to put on the board agenda if employees can donate sick time to them. So you'll see in items six and seven, we have two requests for two separate employees for a donation of sick leave.
I'll make a motion to support or to approve the request to donate sick leave. And in both of these cases, we can do them in one fell swoop, so.
Correct, okay.
We can do both at once?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Number eight, request to hire a road patrol officer early duty to retirement.
So we have a employee who we have just received official... So we have a employee who we have just received official resignation for retirement, which then opens up an opportunity for any of our Road Patrol to be promoted into that position. It's a process that takes place. Going back a little, when I was here before, Sheriff Oswald and I came to the Board requesting that instead of every time there's an opening for corrections, that we be allowed to have a certain amount of positions that we are allowed to fill on a rolling basis. That was due to the fact that we were having a lot of turnover in corrections and the amount of time that it takes to train an employee coming in is so significant that sometimes they want to get moving really quick on it. And waiting two weeks for another board meeting was complicating things to get their trainings in. So we, the Board had approved at the time to that they could fill those positions, nothing above that, at any time within their budget. And the request here is similar in nature. However, we don't have the retiree being out in time for the new employee that's going to be starting on the road to take effect and to be employed. And so they would be going to the academy while we are still technically full-staffed. The caveat on this one is that we do have grants that help the county to reimburse for that time that they're at the academy. So while the county upfront would be, would be obtaining that cost of them being in the academy, we would receive reimbursement afterwards for that time. But again, it is adding that extra position of that person at the academy. So we're bringing it to the Board to ask for that approval, that we can get them to the academy and trained and then be able to take the position, the Road Patrol position, of whoever is promoted into the position of the retiree, if that makes sense.
It does. It does in, in the agenda. It says expected in February. That makes me feel like it's not concrete.
This agenda was written before we received written notice from the employee that he is retiring.
It is in February. Okay.
Correct.
So it will be not expected. Okay.
It's pretty advantageous for us to do that, the academy is seventeen weeks.
Yeah.
So here's, here's a window where, and we've done that in other positions before, where the, the training time to lead up. I mean, it's not going to come out probably exactly to that, but.
Can I get a motion to get this going?
I apologize. Let's see.
Number eight.
Yeah. I'd move that we hire the Road Patrol Officer early due to a pending retirement in February.
And provide, yeah, that overlap. So, okay. Support.
Any discussion?
No, I was just saying with the academy being seventeen weeks, it would definitely shorten the time that they would be short an individual on the road by being able to do this now. It also allows for whoever would be selected through their process for the detective's position to have some time working with the current one before he finishes retiring. So I think it's an excellent handoff and it's, I think, long-term, it's a win for the county.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Number nine, central dispatch relocation.
I believe this is just for discussion purposes. We, we're not looking for any motions or anything at this time. Just a quick update. So I have spoken with Michigan Works. They are in favor of allowing us to move Michigan State Extension over into the sublet of QPAD, who also is in favor of that as well. There are offices over there to fit them because dispatch will be then located where MSU Extension is, excuse me, next to our Veteran Service Office. It's the best place for them. We went over there, we measured it. Everything will definitely fit. Corey did take a look at it. The most extensive and probably expensive part will be moving sprinklers, sprinkler heads that are in there. But it's doable and it is the best location for them, agreed upon by, you know, our dispatch director, myself, Brandon, Corey, we all, we all met, we all took a look at it. So that's moving along. We still have PFN coming and running that fiber for us as part of that. We're looking into the issue of what we can do as far as if we need a tower or not. So we're, we're kind of exploring that. That would be one of the biggest things regarding the move would, would be if we had to come up with the funds to either construct one or move a tower from Esconaba, City of Esconaba, which is where, the one that we currently use right now. I know our dispatch director and our IT director both took a field trip to, was it Nagani? Or Marquette, Marquette's dispatch, because they just relocated as well to take a look at what is working for them, what's not, how we want to set ours up. And if, if Jen wants to come up and talk on that, she can if she has any additional information. But right now, we're just kind of in the information gathering of that and how we want to set it up equipment-wise and what we're going to need. If we're going to have to buy new equipment, if it's going to be better for us doing it that way or moving the existing equipment kind of piecemeal so we don't have as much of an interruption in services while we're relocating. So I just wanted to let the Board know, I know it's been on a building in grounds agenda for a while. I know it's been discussed a while, but it's still in motion and the pieces are still coming together to get them over to the service center.
Okay. Is there budget set aside for this?
We don't have any budget numbers yet because we haven't had to expense anything yet. Once Corey moves MSU Extension over, I think then we can have a better idea of exactly what he's going to need to do over there as, as far as construction goes to get dispatch set up. And we still haven't decided, like I alluded to, whether or not we're going to move our existing equipment over there or purchase new equipment. If we did purchase new equipment, that's going to be quite an expense. And I know that we've talked about a little bit as far as the dispatch budget and their fund balance, using some of that, or what we would need to do, where we would need to pull that if we did have to purchase large amounts of equipment over into the new dispatch center. So we haven't gotten that far yet. It was more the logistics of, is this possible?
Yeah. No, I wasn't asking that. I was asking, did we budget for this?
We haven't anything in our budget right now. The only thing that we'd have to bring to finance to take out would be fund balance from dispatch. But we don't have anything in the current budget for the renovation.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick question for the Director. When, when you're looking at the change of equipment versus transporting stuff we have versus new stuff, there's, there's something out there right now where they're getting ready to enhance what's out there for the equipment. Is it more cost-effective for us to put new stuff in, leave that operational and then, you know, and one changeover come in versus...
So I know that one of the reasons that we were wanting to wait initially is because we have the CAD upgrade that's coming and that's a project that's being worked on by UP 911. We do have a meeting this Friday with sort of an update on that. We've, we've come to an agreement on vendor. We got the best and final offer that we're going to be reviewing as, as, you know, the UP 911 Authority on Friday. The problem that we have run into, of course, is with the state budget. We were expecting, we had a lot of really positive feedback from high up that was implying that they thought that we were going to do well with getting some sort of an appropriation. And as of right now, that has not happened. There's still a lot of hope that that will happen. But what has been done meanwhile is to develop a payment schedule of what it would look like for each county based on the formula that we use within the UP 911 Authority on seats per county, et cetera, which I did give a copy of that to Emily. It's not locked in. It's just sort of giving a, a general idea of what that would look like. And, you know, so to say that we would wait until that new CAD project moved in, when we were talking about waiting for the new CAD project, that was expected in spring of '26.
Right.
Because we've had continuous delays with that, I don't know that it makes sense anymore to wait for that CAD project because you consider the fact that we're also paying a monthly rent amount.
Yeah.
So that sort of defeats the purpose of that hold at this point. As far as moving equipment over, I mean, the biggest thing would be the furniture, I think, is, is primarily. I mean, we're going to, I, I would think that we would need some additional racks that we would have to buy, that we could get some things set up with some of our other equipment. But I think we're talking furniture as far as being able to have that in place and moving. There's pros and cons, of course, to both. There's an expense involved with getting new equipment and new furniture brought over. There's a, there's a shorter timeframe where we are down and not serviceable while that move takes place if we use the existing. So there's pros and cons to both.
So then the non-interruption in 911 service as we go through that transition, that would go to Nagani and what Chippewa is.
So our backups, yeah, our backups would be like Marquette, you know. So there's always a plan in place on where our, where our calls would go. And that's another reason why that UP 911 conspiracy is so important because we've got all of the same equipment, all of our calls plot on their CAD, we share it. And we've got each other's radio talk groups to do dispatching. We do have things in place to do that. But obviously, having your people that know the area, there's no delays, you know, as far as getting resources en route to an emergency.
So I know there's, I've had questions, people had asked, you know, well, what's going to happen? You know, if, when that moves, are we not going to have access to 911? And I know it goes, even if they were busy, it keeps going down the line.
Everybody's going to do their best for the county they're covering. Obviously, each county does the best work for their own county because they're familiar with the location and which resources go with which. But no one's going to be left uncovered.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's just informational, right?
Correct.
Information, yeah. Okay. Number 10, Circuit Court Probation Office remodeling.
This is informational as well. Building in grounds had met a couple of times regarding this. The MDOC office has added another employee. And right now, they don't have space for them, office space that's confidential. And so they are, their office is located, the new officer, in probate court's waiting room, which poses problems because they cannot see clients in their office because then you're mixing adults and juveniles in the same, in the same space, which they can't allow. And so we are going to renovate the current MDOC office where the receptionist sits and it's going to be broken up into two separate offices. We have requested, I reached out to MDOC to ask if they are going to fund, even partially fund these renovations because of their addition of the officer. They have written us back and they said no. So this is going to be a county expense. We have budgeted for this. We did originally get a quote from Roy Ness on the project. Corey is able to do a lot of the work himself. The only thing that may need to be outsourced is any electrical movement. And so then we would reach out with quotes on that. It wouldn't be over and above the amount to put out an RFP or anything. So it is on maintenance schedule. And with Scott being done at the parks, he is the one qualified that's going to be doing most of the renovation in the office. So it's going to be coming up in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
That was informational only. Number 11, courtroom usage policy.
Now that we have taken ownership of the boardroom, Michigan Works used to have a, a schedule and a calendar just so that there wasn't any overlap from any committees or boards that were using the boardroom. The county has also developed that as well. And we thought it appropriate to have a policy in place and something that a group coming to try and use the boardroom has to look over and sign off on and apply to have their meetings in the boardroom. I did take this to our IT Director to look over if there's anything that he had. His issues were mostly security issues and, and not wanting to give key fobs out to people just because in the past, he's had a lot of issues with not returning them or people aren't, no longer employed with that committee or are part of that committee and then they go off with our key fobs and we never find out about it. And so his suggestion, which you'll see in the policy, was putting a time limit on the meetings so that the meetings would have to end in conjunction with when the door locks on the outside of the building. So that way, if there are meetings that have to be open to the public for Open Meetings Act, that there's no violation by the Board for having the meeting outside of those hours when the door locks and then people not being able to be into the meeting, come into the meeting. You'll look over the policy. There's basic language in there about how to use the boardroom, that the county does not want to rent it out to any organizations or committees that may not fall in line with the county's values or purpose. There's language about food, drink, that sort of thing, cleaning up after yourself after using the boardroom, not a fixing things to the walls or the furniture, essentially just making sure that we're trying to protect ourselves from any damage that could happen.
Pro, under number, oh, wait, never mind. I'm not going to say anything because I'll get... Somebody make a motion so I can ask some questions.
You can make the motion too.
Yeah, you can make a motion too, but I have, I have a bunch of questions, so.
Okay. Can we get a mo, motion to approve the usage policy?
Well... Yeah. And unfortunately, there's two separate things here. There's a policy and then there's an agreement. And this, this agenda item just says policy. So are you looking just to work on the policy tonight or both?
No, the agreement is part of the policy. So that's the attachment to the policy. So when, when an entity wants to rent the boardroom, they just have to fill out, they have to read the policy, but then the agreement is essentially...
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
All right. I'm sorry, Matt, you can finish your motion.
Okay, I'll make it. I'll move that we adopt the boardroom usage policy.
Can I get support?
Uh, yeah, support.
Okay. Discussion.
So under the usage agreement, number four, prohibited items. No food is permitted inside the boardroom, alcoholic beverages, illegal drugs, tobaccos and weapons of any kind are strictly prohibited. Don't we have, don't we allow weapons here? We don't have a no weapons policy at this service center?
We, we do for open meetings for the county board. It's your, I guess it would be the Board's discretion if they would allow it for other agencies that are not county affiliated to bring that in. That would be up to the Board.
Okay. Because I think under...
Because not every entity that uses the boardroom is going to be a governmental entity. So some of that may not apply, but that's up to the Board to determine.
Okay.
I have several questions. I apologize, it's a long meeting, but I've got a lot on this. The, under the policy, item number two, the first bullet, it says activities will align with the mission and values of Delta County. What are the mission and values of Delta County? I have, I have looked online to try to find them and I have absolutely no idea what the mission and values of Delta County are.
When I was here, probably back in 2020, 2021, we did adopt a mission statement. I don't know whatever happened to that mission statement. I couldn't tell you. I can send you what was adopted back then. And it did have values attached to it.
Okay.
So I can send you that.
I would just make a suggestion that if we're going to have someone who is going to be reading this policy and they have to, their, their group must align with the mission and values, that we better have that readily available so that people can read it. And so that would be the first thing. The second is, it's, in, in bullet number two, it states that the eighteen-hour notice will be given to an organization who is scheduled to have their meeting. And if something within the county takes precedence, that they get bumped and that they are given eighteen-hour notice. Eighteen hours is not sufficient for an open meeting to be able to contact all their people, reschedule it, make the notification to, to the public. So that's insufficient. And so I, I think that that needs to be re-looked at and reevaluated. I don't think that's fair to an organization to give that. And eighteen hours could be, you know, five o'clock in the evening and that, it, it's not business hours, this is hours. So, I mean, it's just not enough notice. This is hours, so, I mean, it's just not enough notice.
I will, I'll leave this up to the board to think about then as far as that goes because a lot of issue that was had when we didn't have control over the boardroom before was that when the county board wanted to meet, they couldn't. And they would have to find alternate arrangements because the boardroom was already booked. So, there's that, as well as this room being the EOC. And so, if an emergency did come up...
Well, an emergency is clearly different, right? If we have to go into the EOC, people are not gonna be meeting. So, you know, that, that makes sense.
So, there is language in here about the board having priority.
Yeah.
And it's because of that, because of that clause.
And I totally get that, I just, I, I'm trying to look at both sides. I mean, if I think about having a meeting scheduled and it's an open, it's an OMA meeting. And now, all of a sudden, I'm being told, you know, 12 hours before or whatever, or 18, 18 hours before, I have to contact all of my people, I have to make the public notice that it's being changed, which that 18 hours, I can't do it.
And it's, I agree with you, it's very inconvenient.
Yeah.
It, I guess it's up to the board how they wanna prioritize it then for the new pitch.
I would have to say it's at least 24 hours, unless it's an emergency. An emergency is different.
24, I don't think's unrealistic. The one part I looked at, it in, with your thought, if it's one of the county boards or committees that, you know, there's something, which we have had a few times in there. But is it one of those groups that's run into an outside group, not necessarily one of those that fall under the OMA requirements for that 18 hours for them to have their notice?
Well, I guess where do they 18 hours come from?
Because, oh, I apologize.
It's the time allowed if you have to call a special meeting is 18 hours.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I, I think 24 would be more realistic if it's an outside group and not one of, you know, the county or government.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna be fair to the other, I don't wanna, if we're going to allow other organizations to come in here and use this room, then we should be, we should be cognizant that they're meeting OMA requirements as well. And all of the sudden, we've just completely stomped on them to be able to even meet that by, by saying, I only have to give you 18 hours notice.
Again, that's the priority of the board. I mean, you know, depending on how they want it, if they want more control.
I think it should be 24 hours. And, and that, you know, hopefully, we'll never have to do this to someone because that's a really short notice for them to have to make a major change. But I would say 24 hours. And then in the third bullet, it says that the county, it says that at their discretion, if the intended use is deemed inappropriate. That seems really wishy to me. What is deemed inappropriate?
Our mission and values?
That would be fine if that's what this says, but this says deemed inappropriate.
According to our missions and values, mission statement and values.
Then I would suggest we add according to, I mean, it just, I, I, this is really, uh, to me.
I mean, that clarifies it, yeah, yeah.
The other part, I think this addresses the other concern you have where the second part, or conflicts with county operations. So, that would be one of those, even if you haven't had the emergency, but it's pending, you can open the EOC up in advance with minimum staffing and you haven't gotten to the point of that emergency.
Exactly.
So, that could very well, I mean, that, I think clarifies when that would come into, when that would come into play.
Number four, the third bullet, it says any attempt to connect to county networks or modify county-owned equipment is strictly prohibited. Don't we have guest Wi-Fi? And if we have guest Wi-Fi, connecting to the guest Wi-Fi should not be considered strictly prohibited.
I don't know if we do or not. I'd have to check with IT. I don't know if we have guest Wi-Fi in the service center or not.
I do believe you do. Yeah. I mean, we can check that right now without waiting.
This was suggested by our IT director.
I know, I'm, I'm not saying that it's not.
I don't know his, without him being here to say it, I just, it might be for security purposes or, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, that's, that for me is problematic because, you know, I don't want, if I'm here and I see that there's a guest Wi-Fi available and I connect to it, I don't want to be held liable that I connected to this Wi-Fi that was wide open for me. So, that seems conflicting.
I can see if we have one, I don't know for sure or not if we do have one. I mean, I would believe that if Brandon set one up that was for guests, that it would be for that purpose, somebody outside the county who is coming in, so the securities would all be set for that. But I don't know for sure, I can't say.
I think the wording here needs to be modified so that it, it doesn't sound like it's prohibited if it's available. I think he, he can, he can reword that, he'll know what I'm talking about.
I definitely would agree with the modifying of county-owned equipment.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
What I see we need is somebody said they're gonna try to plug in their own thing or hook something up though.
Yeah, I mean, I know where he's getting at here, I, I get it. But I just, I, I wanna make sure that it's clear to the, you know, a general user what they mean, what he means by connect to county networks, so. Number six, third bullet, smoking and vaping inside the facility. Do we need to add chewing tobacco to that? Or can we just say, instead of smoking or vaping, can we just say tobacco usage including vaping? So that it includes smoking, chewing, vaping?
Do you want me to include THC in that as well for vaping? I mean, if you're, we, if we say tobacco...
I'm assuming the vaping, the whole reason this is here is because you don't want someone having that device and blowing that air out. I mean, I'm assuming because it says smoking and vaping.
Right, so that's what I mean by like...
County building, you're not supposed to smoke anyways.
She's asking if we're gonna include chewing tobacco.
Yeah, because you include it later. And so, it, it's, it's in, chewing tobacco is in here later in the policy, so why isn't it here as well? So, I'm just thinking we would just add it at this point as well.
Right.
Oh, and then the, under eight, the second bullet, says the room must be left in the same condition as it was found. What if I walk in and it's in a disarray? I mean, I'm assuming, I know what you wanna get with this, but this statement seems odd to me. It, we probably just should say the room is expected to be left in good working condition, you know, with cleanup, we know what I'm saying. It shouldn't be necessarily left in the condition I walk in because I don't know what condition that might be. If someone didn't do, if someone didn't do what they're supposed to do and they had a meeting prior to me and I walk in and now this is what I get, I don't wanna leave the meeting, I don't wanna leave the room in that. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's just a strange statement.
I know exactly what you're getting at. Just be clean when you leave.
She's got elections.
Anyways, yeah. So, that's the last one on that, on that policy. Oh, and then on the agreement, I've just got a, under the user information on the dates of use, I would add if it's a repeated scheduled event. So, it's not just one, it's like, you know, if it's repeated, yeah. If it's monthly, that, that would just be added on there. There should be an or, and/or on number three, four, which is weird to have a number three and then to have numbers below it. Those should probably be letters, that's all. But it's number four, prohibited items. It should probably say and/or weapons. Because right now, it's saying you have to have all those things together, so. And then I just have a question about, and I would like to think about this. Having the meeting end at 6:30, we have digital locks on all the doors. And the digital locks, can't they be programmed that if someone, if it's in the calendar and the meeting goes until 7:30, doors are unlocked until that meeting ends?
We did talk about that, but that would be difficult to manage because it would have to be done and be the responsibility of the IT director to do those things at that day and time. He can't schedule them ahead of time, it would have to be on that day. And then we were looking at the liability, so say he's not there or he forgets to do it, then it's on him and that agency can't meet. And we don't want that to happen either, to where they can't get into the building or they can't keep it open and then they're in violation of the Open Meetings Act. So, that's why we put the end time for the usage.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to think this through. I mean, like, if we have a meeting, you, I mean, you just have no idea how long a meeting is gonna go. You don't know what's gonna happen. And so, we're basically saying, you know, you're in the middle of a meeting and then 6:30 happens and you just gotta say, okay, we have to recess and reschedule it for another time. I, I don't, this just logically does not make sense to me. And I really think we need to figure out, how can we use the technology we have, which is we have digital locks? How can we program those digital locks so that they are, they match the schedule that we have for the calendar? And I, I don't know whether the calendar can integrate, whether the locks can integrate, whatever. And why does it have to fall on Brandon? Why can't, why can't the administration office program the, the locks to open and close? I mean, these are, I don't understand why it has to fall on the IT director to have digital locks programmed on and off.
I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know anything about the software, the equipment, who should or shouldn't have access to it. I mean, those are all questions I, I don't know the answer to.
I think that, I think that this is, we need to figure out how people can come and go in the building without this restriction of, we're closing it at 6:30. If we're gonna allow people in for meetings and we're gonna have, a meeting might start at 5:00 and you think it's gonna be done at 6:00 and the next thing you know, it's 7:00 and the doors are locked because, you know, the building closes at 6:30. I mean, I, either you just can't, you're not gonna let people schedule the meetings or if we're gonna put this kind of a restriction on there, you're gonna have to limit who can use this room, totally.
May I ask?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, well, for example, our solid waste management authority meets here and we meet here at 7:00 PM. And so, Dave Lindquist can let people in or I can let people in, you know, things of that nature. So, that really wouldn't fall under the 8:00 AM to 6:30 PM.
Right, and we did discuss that. And we talked about different agencies or committees that have county commissioners or county employees on them because we do have access and are allowed to get into the building to allow them to expand on that. But when we have outside agencies who we don't have anybody affiliated with the county on, that's when it becomes more of a security issue on the county.
Because like, for example, a conservation district, right, they meet at 5:30.
Right.
And their meetings, I don't think I've ever been to one that's been less than an hour. And so, you know, the door might lock at 6:30, but does that mean they have to be out by 6:30?
Well, the reason, if it's an open meeting act, they might be in violation if people can't come in.
Little wedge thing to put in the door.
Right.
To keep the door open, that's what we do for, that's what we do for solid waste. We put the little wedge in the door so that it stays open.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask, and I don't know if you know this off the top of your head. Do you know how many organizations that are non-governmental, you know, whether they're volunteer organizations or whatever, meet here?
We usually don't, I mean, we didn't hold the calendar before, so it's hard for us to say. I mean, Michigan Works is the one who approved any agencies or entities that use this. I mean, I know Michigan Works uses it and they're not affiliated with the government or anything with the county. We do allow access, like, for our tenants to use it. So, QPAD or whoever else is in here, Health Department uses it. I mean, they're more affiliated with the county though. But as far as any other agencies or requests, I can say it, I don't think administration directly has received calls, but I don't know and I can't answer if Michigan Works has.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, I mean, it's definitely out there question to bring out, but, okay.
Okay.
Has legal reviewed this?
They have not.
Okay. Are, is legal going to review it before we make it available to the public?
If the board would wish, I can do that.
Well, the reason that I'm asking is because there's, there's a lot of stuff in here about damages, like if you do damage and, and that sort of thing, how you're liable. But there's no explanation or I don't personally know, how do you know? How do you know who does what damage? So, if I come in here and I walk in and there's already damage done and I report it, but then the organization that was here prior says, oh, I didn't do that, you must have done that. I mean, how, I, I don't understand how we're gonna monitor that.
Actually, I, that just brought another point to it. So, on the outside of these, there's your FOB, right?
Yep.
But that's the same thing you need to get into the door. So, if, say, yesterday and earlier today, there was no other meetings here and it's one of those other, whether it's, I would say, one of the tenants necessarily, but it could be one of the tenants or one of those other, maybe it's the state agency that meets here that doesn't have fobs. Even though they could get in the door because the building's unlocked during that time, who's responsible then to come and actually unlock these doors? Because they're done, done by FOB now.
Well, all of our tenants have fobs.
Right, but if it's one of those other agencies you talked about.
Right, so you're getting to the point where I was making, which is if these doors are shut, then they are digital locks. Someone is saying the door is gonna be open during these times because we have to have them open because there's meetings in there.
Right.
If there's no meetings, then we would shut the doors and people cannot use this room unless they have a scheduled meeting.
It's been, it's been very hard to figure out what the right or the wrong thing to do is with this room. Because even though we have locks on those doors and we want them to be shut so that people just don't have access to our boardroom, because we do have a lot of money invested in the, in the boardroom. Unfortunately, there are people that do open the doors and walk through in and out throughout the day and so those doors get left open.
But those fobs tell us who's opening and clo- who's opening these doors.
Not if they're opened from the inside.
What do you mean from the inside?
So, if we have employees or tenants in the building who cut through the boardroom and open that door and leave it open.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Registration for it.
Lock right through. So, the only other one that I guess we can look at in there is if they are going to be one of those groups, organizations that doesn't have somebody within that committee or group with a FOB, they would have to come and physically sign for one for that day. I don't know what the on/off time is on it, but at least you'll have a name, you'll have a signature. They don't turn it back in, you know, that makes it...
Oh, yeah, I mean, we can just put rules in place, you charged for it, whatever, you know? And I, I, when I talked to Brandon about this too, one of the things we talked about was, you know, having like a, there needs to be like this annual sort of review of these contracts to say, you know, do you, does this person who's signed off still, you know, associated with this organization or with this committee or whatever? And if not, then, you know, we need to collect.
Correct.
Or they need to pay for it, you know? Because, I mean, the, the fobs are, they're cheap, right? You know, if someone, we can put a $20 on them and, you know, they might cost five bucks to buy or 10 bucks or whatever. You know, and you can charge the organization for it if they don't, if their person doesn't turn it back in. But it seems to me like the most logical, if you're doing this repeat, you've got a meeting and it's repeated all the time, that you're, either your recording secretary or your chair or somebody has, it sounds like the only way to do it is if they have a FOB. You know, and if, if that's the case, there's gonna be some, you know, process that takes place there. And you may not like the fact that these fobs are out there, but, you know, those fobs record who comes and goes. So, you know, you know who's coming and going. And you could program it so that that FOB only can open the doors during the time that the meetings are taking place. You know, so there's, there's so much more we can be doing and I, I feel like we're just, this feels very like, you know, here's what I wanna do because it just works. It, it works for me this way right now. And instead of thinking, like, how can we do this better? How can we do this more efficiently? How can we do this so that we don't have, you know, the IT director doing all of the work? You know, I just feel like there's things that we can, we can change and, and make it better. I'm fine with it for now, but I really do think that there's changes that can be made.
We can take it back to committee, we don't have to vote on it today. I mean, if you want changes, if you want to look at really what the board wants. I mean, I think, I think that's, that's what you need to determine, right? If there were some commissioners, I think that wanted to make sure that commission had priority because they didn't wanna have to find... because they didn't want to have to find meeting space somewhere else if a meeting came up. But if the board wants to look at it on the other end and make it more available and more open, you know, whatever the board wants, I mean,
Yeah, and I don't want, I don't want to insinuate that I'm trying to make it more open for people, because I'm not. And I am trying to figure out, how do we, even for the board's perspective, you know, how do we make this more? When I, like, the Parks and Rec Commission, this is a county committee that meets in this room, I cannot, I cannot be done at 6:30, it's just not gonna happen. So I'm gonna have to, the, the doors are gonna have to be unlocked. And so, am I putting a wedge in the door? What am I do, I don't know what I'm doing. So like, I think about how this is written, and it's like, I don't understand.
Well, isn't that what we do now?
How, I, but it doesn't say that in here, it doesn't say, this is how you stay past 6:30. It says you have to be out of here by 6:30. And that's just not gonna happen for so many committees.
Well, no, because some committees meet at 7:00.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I would-
Bring it back to committee.
Go ahead, Karen.
Why don't we, you take it back, do some changes to it? Dr. Brandon, can somebody else set up the fobs? And let's go from there.
Which committee is handling it?
Buildings and grounds.
Oh, okay, perfect, dart, sorry.
I would, from my original motion to approve it, I would amend my motion that we defer indefinitely.
And who supported that? Did I support it? I'll support your amendment, yeah.
And then that way gives you time for, for corrections and stuff, and for your committee.
So, we are deferring that, so.
We need a, we need a vote.
We need a vote.
All in favor.
All in favor. Anybody opposed? It is deferred, okay. Number 12.
That was our add-on.
That was our add-on. Something to do with, um.
It's the Viewpoint, um, commercial, or segment, I should say. Ed Legault and I were approached by this show called Viewpoint, it's on public television. Public television, instead of having commercials, will have like five-minute programming to fill that gap. And how they, it's like a commercial in the sense of how they fill that gap is that they charge whoever it is that they are filming for that program for the promotion of whatever the program is about. And so they do segments on communities and development, economic development, to showcase your community and what you have for tourism or development going on. And they had contacted Delta County, I don't know how they found Delta County, if, if Mr. Legault had reached out to them or not, I don't, I don't know the history behind it, but I was looped in because Mr. Legault wanted me to be a part of the meeting with them. And essentially, it was done online and, and we met with one of the producers who asked a few questions, just about the vision of the county, things that we already had started as far as economic development, where we wanted to go, what we have to offer, what's different about our community, those types of questions. And after this interview, he did say that he wanted to move forward with the production from where they were, where we were at. And then gave the information that I had forwarded to the commissioners about what their program is, what the segment would kind of look like. And then said that we would need financial support for it. And so you'll see in your packet, there is a letter of recommendation that was given from Mr. Legault. And it sounds as though he feels this would be something that's positive for the county. As far as finances go, obviously, this wasn't something that I have financed through our fiscal year '26 budget. Our departments, most of our departments really don't have marketing attached to them. Our largest departments that do would be like our airport or our parks, that we try to draw people in to use our services. Those budgets do have some marketing funds in them. I have not approached either manager of those departments to ask them for their feedback on this. But I know that Viewpoint was looking for board support. We have a meeting scheduled with them tomorrow, and so they were looking for board support before that meeting to be able to fund it financially.
That's a lot of, a lot of national coverage.
Yeah. Yeah, looked at. Should go in fund finance first, well.
Yeah, during the time that we have. So for your meeting with that tomorrow.
There's no motion on the floor, point of order?
Yes. We need a motion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I, I really, I understand this, I understand there's potential in, I, I just can't, this is like out of the blue, $20,000, that's a lot of money. You know, with no sort of like planning or, you know, process that has been followed or anything, so, you know, in my personal opinion, I, I just don't, I don't want to support this.
Let's get a motion so we can vote on it.
I don't even know what I'm making a motion for. Is it, is it just a motion to support the conversation, or is it a motion to?
When does this have to be decided by?
Yesterday, no, I'm just kidding. I think, I think they were looking for something like immediate, and I did explain to him, it's, it's a process. Like, we have a process for when we have funds that are not budgeted for, that we have to go through, and I didn't have enough time to schedule a finance committee meeting to get an answer from finance as to where we pull the funds from. I know Mr. Legault did speak about trying to reach out to partners he has, about contributing to that so that the entire bill wouldn't fall on the county. But at this point, you know, if I could give any information to him tomorrow to know where the board's leaning for it, is it something that they're interested in pursuing? We can vote on that tonight, just to see if it's something that we are interested in getting more information on. We could make a motion like that, if it's something that the board just doesn't feel is appropriate for where we're at, they can make that motion, or if they feel wherever we can find them.
Well, we wouldn't make a motion at that point, we just wouldn't support anything, right?
Right, right.
Because I, you know, like, I know that the parks has money set aside for marketing and stuff, and this may fall within that, you know, within what their plan is, but there's been no conversation, and I just haste makes, haste makes waste, and I just feel like this is way too hasty, and so I, I, I would not want to support moving forward on this, at this point, so.
Yeah, I think there's some questions with that, if other monies coming in versus the county being on the hook for the whole amount, is it worth something pursuing, yes, but I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered.
$8,000, yes.
Can we just move it to finance?
Okay.
I mean, why not just say that we're moving it to finance? Because if we don't make any type of motion or show any support or interest, then we could potentially be left out. Where at least if we're saying we're reviewing it by finance, by then maybe we could get some more information on it. And even if the, even if Ed Legault has, they have to spot the money if, if we say, you know, we brought it through finance and then we're willing then to be an active participant in it.
Or, or maybe say, you know, we can, we can commit X number of dollars for this marketing because it's, you know, something that the park or the airport wants to do, but not commit to the full amount.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not willing to just say, like, let's just be done with it, I'm gonna make a motion to move to finance.
Support.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, goes to finance. Number 12, general public comment.
Linda Bradley, Branson Township. You guys are talking about playground equipment. We have a very young grandson, he's gonna be five, but I've been trying to take him to different parks. Well, number one, I really don't know where all the parks are. And number two, most of the stuff is too big for him to play on. Is there gonna be something for the younger children?
Yeah, I shouldn't respond, but, I'll make it in my board comment.
Commissioner comment.
Or commissioner comment, yeah.
Well, actually, you guys are exposed to it, yeah, but that's okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll look it up for you.
Okay, any other general public comment? See, none?
And there's none on, nope, no remote.
Commissioner comment.
You want me to start?
Yep.
Okay, I can tell you that the playground equipment, I thought it was gonna be on here, on the actual drawings, but it does not. I think that the age group is, starts at four. So they, it's for younger, there's, there's two separate playgrounds, and I think one is like four years of age and the other one is five years, and I think they go up to like 11 or 12. And so there's different parts of the playground equipment that are relative to that age group, so. Other than that, I also have, uh. Can you move on and I will? Yeah, because I have to find something, so, yeah, just move on.
Kelly.
I'm gonna pass tonight, thanks.
Commissioner Jensen.
Two things, one, reiterate for November 11th at 11:00 AM, the ceremony at the Chamber Building for our veterans, I want to make sure it gets highlighted again. And then currently, the planning commission's working on the county master plan, and I'll hold it up so the camera can see. You'll see these located around town, please take the two to three minutes out, you can either scan the QR code or go to the website that's here. There's also an option to be able to do a paper copy, and there's, there are, it is listed where those drop-off locations are. This will actually help, help us to be able to move forward for the future, for, you know, the next five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road of, of where we want to see certain things within the county. So please take a few moments to fill that out.
Administrator?
No, thank you.
Back to?
No, thank you.
For myself, went to several townships, it was just kinda normal business for, as we go. I did get an email from a gentleman from NACO, and I ended up talking to him, he called me, and he wanted to know about cold water and ice search and rescue. And he is going to publicize it through NACO, which is national, so it would be Delta County. And he said he talked to me, and I thought, I don't remember talking, I says, but I do know the person that you can talk to. So I give him Commissioner Jensen's phone number, and he did call him, and Commissioner Jensen gave him a whole file of information. So hopefully, Delta County will be through the nation on that. So that's all I got. Okay, meeting schedule, regular board commissioners on 11/18 at 5:15 here at the service center, and, well, we're already talking about December.
I know, right?
12:22, 25, right here. 30-day notice of appointments, need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.